Okay, the October 11th, 2021 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It's 2 o'clock PM. I'm Lorena Gonzalez, President of the Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Juarez.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Musqueta.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Sawant.
Present.
Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Herbal.
Here.
Council President Gonzalez.
Present.
Non-present.
Thank you so much. Presentations, I'm not aware of a presentation for today, so we'll move to approval of the minutes. The minutes of the City Council meetings of September 27th and October 4th, 2021 have been reviewed. If there's no objection, the minutes will be signed. Hearing no objection, the minutes are being signed. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes? If there's no objection, the introduction referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. If there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Colleagues, at this time, we will open the remote public comment period for items on the City Council Agenda, introduction referral calendar, and the Council's work program. I want to thank everyone for their ongoing patience as we continue to operate this remote public comment system. It remains our strong intent to continue to have public comment at all of our council meetings. And as a reminder, the City Council does reserve the right to end or eliminate these public comment periods at any point if we deem that the system is being abused or is no longer suitable for allowing our meetings to be conducted efficiently and effectively. I'll moderate the public comment period in the following manner. Public comment period for today is 20 minutes. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered to provide public comment on the Council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number used for this registration and using the meeting phone number ID and passcode that was emailed to them upon confirmation. This is different. This is different than the general meeting, listen line call-in information. Again, I'll call on each speaker by name and in the order in which they registered on the Council's website. If you've not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can sign up before the end of public comment by going to Council's website at seattle.gov/council. Public comment link is also listed on today's agenda. Once I call your name, staff will unmute you. You are going to hear the prompt of you have been unmuted, and that'll be your cue to press star six before you can begin speaking. Please begin by stating your name, the item you are addressing. And as a reminder, your comment should relate to an item on today's agenda, the introduction and referral calendar, or the Council's work program. You're going to hear a chime in about 10 seconds. That means you've got 10 seconds left of your allotted time. I ask that you begin wrapping up your public comment. If you don't end your comments at that allotted time, then your microphone is going to be muted, so we can call on the next speaker. Once you've completed your public comment, we ask that you please disconnect from the line, and if you plan to continue following this meeting, you can do so on Seattle Channel or one of the listening options listed on the agenda. Public comment period is now open. Again, we're going to start with the first speaker. After you hear the prompt of you have been unmuted, please remember to press star six in order to unmute yourself. Okay. First speaker is Howard Gale, and then we will hear from Daniel Kavanaugh.
Good afternoon. Howard Gale, District 7, speaking on failed police accountability. Around one-third of SPD officers remain unvaccinated. According to the Officer Down Memorial Page, in 2020, 65% of police line-of-duty deaths were from COVID. That is over five times as many as were killed by gunfire, knife, and assault combined. So, police can kill a person because of an imaginary fear, but they refuse to protect themselves or the public from a very real and a very deadly fear. This makes clear the police culture is so imbued with irrational fears and bias that policy and training will have little effect on it. There is only accountability, something the Council has abandoned. For the first time in decades, council members will have to face the consequences of the bullying antisocial and transients that imbue police culture. That bullying antisocial and transients killed Charlina Lyles, Terry Caver, Derek Hayden, and many of the dozens killed by the SPD since the start of federal oversight nearly a decade ago. That bullying antisocial and transients severely injured and contailed the rights of hundreds of protesters last year. That bullying antisocial and transients allowed SPD officers to escape accountability, guaranteeing a repeat. These are consequences of failed accountability. Now, council members, having escaped all these consequences as they relax comfortably in their homes or offices, must face this bullying antisocial and transients head-on as Seattle officers dare you to fire them as they maintain an anti-vaccination stance as a clear expression of underlying extreme right-wing beliefs and bias. But SPD officers warned you of this in February 2020, when they, many of whom were younger officers, voted in a landslide election for the right-wing nationalist provocateur Mike Sawant to head their union, the only union of city workers refusing to come to terms with a vaccine mandate. Please, give us full civilian community control of police. Go to seattlestop.org to find out how. That's seattlestop.org.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Daniel Kavanaugh, followed by Logan Swan.
Hey, my name is Dan Kavanaugh. I'm a renter in First Hill, and I'm an organizer with Socialist Alternative, and I'm calling to support Councilmember Shama Sawant's legislation to make construction contractor bosses fully pay 100% of all parking costs for all construction workers on Seattle job sites. And I'm calling on you to stand with construction workers in Seattle, not with the contractor bosses, by voting in support of this basic need for the thousands of workers who build our city. You know, carpenters and other construction workers are required to drive to job sites with vehicles loaded with tools, harnesses, other equipment required for the job, but often have to pay $100 or more a week for parking. And that works out to thousands of dollars a year that construction workers have to pay just to go to work. You know, I've been working in food service for most of my life, and one time that I did work downtown, I got paid parking as somebody who worked at a small bakery. And you know, and if that small bakery can afford it, these big construction corporations, you know, who are making millions of dollars every year can absolutely afford it, especially when it's not an option to take public transit for these construction workers, right? And most construction workers are forced to drive in and park from outside of Seattle because they can't afford to live in the buildings that they themselves build. And this is because the cost of living is so high, especially with the lack of affordable housing and sky-high rents. So, you know, this is something that the workers are demanding, the community is with them, and I really urge council members to support Councilmember Sawant's legislation. I don't want to hear any excuses about, you know, how this isn't something that the Council can do. The Council can act today without delays, without watering down, and the Council must stand with construction workers and not with the millionaire bosses.
Next is Logan Swan, followed by Sonia Ponath. And Logan, you are still muted, so you need to remember to press star six. There you go. Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
My name's Logan Swan. I'm a journeyman ironworker in Local 86 and a District 2 renter. I'm calling to support Shama Sawant's bill to make the contractor bosses pay for 100% of parking costs for construction workers on all Seattle job sites. It was a requirement, actually, when I joined my union's apprenticeship, that I provide proof of car ownership, because public transit is frequently not an option for building trades workers. So, even when it is an option to commute into the city from the more affordable communities that construction workers are often from, you know, far outside of the city, taking public transit doubles or triples the amount of time to and from work. And that's if it's even an option. So, one day I might work in South Lake Union, the next day in Pioneer Square, sometimes both in one day. And, you know, when I've got a tool belt and bucket, hard hat, welding hood, lunchbox, rain gear, safety harness, and so on, loading that onto a city bus, you know, just isn't a realistic expectation. And this is certainly not pleasant for anyone, not for me, not for, you know, the other workers taking public transit. And, you know, some of you have said that you support my sisters and brothers in the carpenters' union while they're on strike against greedy contractors who don't want to pay for benefits and family wages. And, you know, this is a primary demand from the rank and file, you know, to have the bosses pay for parking. So, you know, and carpenter leadership has said that the issue of parking should be handled through legislation. Well, here's your chance to walk the walk. The choice is clear. Right now, workers shell out 20 to 30 bucks a day. We're demanding that the employers that profit off of our labor cover that cost rather than being taxed an hour of our wages every day. So, I urge the other eight city council members to pass Councilmember Sawant's legislation to require the bosses pay this cost of doing business, rather than my sisters and brothers have to pay just to go to work. So, no loopholes, no watering down, contractor paid parking 100%.
Next is Sonia Ponath, and then we will hear from Jordan Quinn.
Hi, this is Sonia Ponath. I'm a working mom in District 3 and a landlord, and I am calling in support of the bill put forward by Councilmember Shama Sawant to make construction contractor bosses pay 100% of all parking costs for all construction workers on Seattle job sites. As Dan mentioned earlier, if a small bakery can pay for it, so can they. And as we've also heard from others, the carpenters, the builders can't even, and workers can't even live in Seattle because the average home price is now over $800,000 and $2,300 a month for rent. And obviously, they cannot ride the bus because they're hauling in all kinds of equipment, and the buses don't even operate that early. And I have to say, I never knew that construction workers had to pay for parking since they're the ones building our city. I thought they could park wherever they wanted and needed to for their jobs. I guess that's naïve. But this strike by the brave carpenters and workers is really highlighting this issue for me, and more people need to know about this. So, please, I'm asking you to pass this legislation as soon as possible without loopholes. As the COVID pandemic continues wreaking havoc on our economy, the US billionaires have gotten 1.8 trillion richer, and globally billionaires are 10.2 billion richer than they were at the start of the pandemic. But working people are struggling, we know this. The mayor's proposed 2022 budget is completely unacceptable. It fails to tax Amazon and big business, and instead cuts $100 million from Amazon tax. As an activist with the Eight-Year-Long People's Budget Movement, I support the efforts of my fellow community members organizing with the Solidarity Budget, and I really hope we can work together and push the City Council to increase the Amazon tax by 120 million so we can have a real expansion. And we could be pleased fund public showers and bathrooms. We must provide sewage, garbage disposal, and other services for...
Next is Jordan Quinn, followed by Nicholas Heffling.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Great. Hi, my name's Jordan Quinn. I'm a renter in District 2. I'm also an activist with the People's Budget Movement and support the efforts of the Solidarity Budget Movement. I'm calling to urge the Democratic council members to join Councilmember Shama Sawant fighting for the movement's demands this year in the People's Budget, fighting to increase the Amazon tax by $120 million on big business, to expand affordable housing and Green New Deal programs in the city, and also to cut Mayor Durkens' proposed $13 million increase to the already bloated police budget so we can instead fund housing and affordable services for working-class people, as well as cutting the $650,000 expansion to the do-nothing officer of the Inspector General. I'm also calling to urge council members to stand with construction workers in Seattle by voting in support of Councilmember Sawant's legislation that would make construction contractors fully pay for 100% of all parking costs for construction workers on Seattle job sites. I signed a petition along with over 1,000 union and non-union workers supporting this common sense legislation because no one should have to pay to work. This would also allow unions to focus on bargaining for higher wages and benefits rather than having to fight just to cover parking costs for their members. But paying for your employees' parking should be a basic cost of doing business in Seattle. If your contractor is making millions hiring workers to build luxury towers or to build a convention center or arenas, other massive buildings in the city, then you can absolutely afford to pay for the parking to the thousands of workers who are actually doing the work every day but can't afford to live here. So, please pass this legislation. It's urgently needed for working-class people in the city.
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Heffling, followed by Kevin Vitzwong.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Heffling, and I'm another community member calling in support of the bill put forward by Councilmember Sawant to make construction contractor bosses pay 100% of all parking costs for all construction workers on Seattle job sites. I'm calling on you to stand with construction workers in Seattle and not with contractor bosses by voting in support of this basic need for the thousands of workers who build our city. Carpenters and other construction workers are required to drive to job sites with vehicles loaded with tools, harnesses, other equipment, but often have to pay 100 or more dollars a week for parking. I heard from a construction worker this morning, he said that sometimes they're paying over $500 a month just to park to go to work. That works out to, obviously, thousands of dollars a year that construction workers have to pay just for working. Due to demands of their jobs, construction workers have to drive there. They have a lot of equipment, as I already mentioned and as you've already heard, to bring to the job sites and not show up before the crack of dawn before public transit is even available to them. Most construction workers are forced to drive in from outside of the city of Seattle because they can't afford to live in the buildings that they themselves are building. This is because the cost of living is so high, especially with the lack of affordable housing and sky-high rents. Average home prices are over $800,000 in Seattle and over $2,300 a month for a single-bedroom apartment. Rents have risen over more than 25% just since the start of this year. This legislation from Sawant's office makes sense, is fair, and should be passed to protect workers in the city of Seattle. Please pass this legislation, stand in solidarity with the demands of the workers, and for all those who are working tirelessly to make this city the beautiful place that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin Vitzwong, followed by Nina Wertz.
Hi, my name's Kevin. I'm a Seattle Education Association member. I'm calling in support of the bill put forward by Councilwoman Shama Sawant to make construction contractor bosses pay the parking costs of their construction workers on Seattle job sites. I'm calling for you to stand in solidarity with construction workers in Seattle and vote in support of this need for the thousands of workers who build our city. Carpenters and other construction workers have to pay a lot each week, and that amounts to a tax, thousands of dollars each year just to go to work. So, that's taken money out of the pockets of working families. And most construction workers can't afford to live here, you know, in the buildings they're building. So, this, you know, the cost of living is so high in Seattle, especially with, you know, the low amounts of affordable housing that we have and the sky-high rents that keep going up, especially during the pandemic. As an educator, I support efforts to make the city affordable to those who work here and many of my colleagues being priced out of the city over the last years. And so, I am urging you as city council members to immediately pass Councilmember Sawant's legislation to require all contractors to pay the parking for the construction workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nina Wertz, followed by Peter Donahue.
Hi, my name is Nina Wertz. I am a carpenter out of Local 30. I am a renter. I live in District 2, and I'm here to push Councilmember Sawant's legislation to pay for contractors to 100% fully pay our parking. A lot of my brothers and sisters out on the job are paying upwards of $500 a month, which is money that should be going to spending time with their families. And as they spend, you know, they spend even less time with their families because they spend so much time on the road as it is because they're forced to drive in our horrific traffic. So, the least you Democrats who say that you're pro-labor can do is make sure that they don't have to pay an extra $500 a month out of their own pocket just to have to go to work. This will help the carpenters who are in the middle of a strike. This will help non-union workers who are stuck paying these costs with their lower wages. They make even less than we do, so we need to help non-union people if we're pro-labor, which I heard from Democrats that they say they're pro-labor, but I'd really like to see it with my own eyes. This will help all the people who can't afford to live in the city that they build. This will take it off of our bargaining committee's plate. Like, we're struggling as it is to ask for the wages that we deserve, and we can't even pay for parking. So, this will free up the committee to actually, hopefully, ask for the wages that we rightfully
Next is Peter Donahue, followed by Shirley Henderson.
Hey, I'm Pete Donahue. I live in the 3rd District. I'm a journeyman electrician in Local 46. And just to double down on what my brothers and sisters will say on the parking tier, that commutes are ridiculous. I'm privileged to live in the 3rd, only because I've lived here a long time, and I have a really good place to live. But I would like to thank Councilman Strauss and Councilman Sawant for walking a picket line with the carpenters last week. I met you all down there in the rain. I really appreciate your leadership, and I would like to ask the rest of the council members to step up and show some leadership as well. The union leadership is struggling. They're actually failing. They're not getting anywhere, and we really need your help and solidarity by time.
Okay, next up is Shirley Henderson, followed by David Haynes.
Hey, thanks for this public comment time. My name is Shirley, and I'm a small business owner in Seattle, District 3. And I am very familiar with the dynamic of big business and big developers making huge profits while gouging working people in small businesses, which is why I'm calling in with my sisters and brothers in support of the bill put forward by Councilmembers Sawant to make construction contractor bosses fully pay 100% of all parking costs for all construction workers on Seattle job sites. I'm calling on you council members to stand with construction workers in Seattle, not just with the bosses, by voting in support of this basic need for thousands of workers who build our city. Similar to service industry workers, most construction workers are forced, as others have said, to commute long distances because they can't afford to live in the buildings they're building in this city. As others have highlighted, this is because the cost of living is so high in this city, especially with the lack of affordable housing and skyrocketing rents. And as we've talked about, rents have risen more than 25% since the start of this year alone. And as a side plug for the People's Budget, this is yet another reason why we need to expand the Amazon tax to build more affordable housing and other services. But back to this legislation from Councilmembers Sawant, it's a no-brainer and has huge support from construction workers and community members. And I want to echo what Sonia said earlier. I had no idea that construction workers had to pay for parking. This is absurd. And I've signed a petition along with more than 1,000 others calling for you as council members to sign on as well. Hundreds of these signatures have come from the last week from construction workers on job sites who are taking time to talk with other workers and community organizers. So, I urge you city council members to immediately pass Councilmembers Sawant's legislation to require all...
Next is David Haynes, followed by Gabriel Mahan.
Thank you. I live in District 7 at First and Cherry Street. There is a crack war, meth war, and heroin sex crime war being conducted in my neighborhood, and the police chief refuses to help. He is going around blaming the homeless for all the crime for an easier payday while only sweeping the tents, never the criminals, into a proper jailhouse. He's going around blaming this city hall. It's obvious City Council imploded society sabotaging the police reform, hiring an unqualified, racist, cowardice police chief sabotaging every specialty unit, endangering society, while council is refusing to investigate the six-figure salary service providers subhuman mistreating innocent homeless who donate tax money meant to solve the homeless crisis to council and the activists and community organizers paid to saturate the public comment, intimidating council to keep giving corrupt racist nonprofits money or else get protested in a trade of integrity and oversight, refusing to investigate and scrutinize embellished data racially tainted with more oppressive discrimination with a priority for criminals in motel, with no community service officer on-site 24/7 with actual qualified nonprofit service providers, instead forsaking innocent homeless never help because they're not bothering people in the neighborhood and they might be the wrong skin color. I think we need a federal investigation of the Office of Housing for ensuring an oppressive racist backstab on homeless denied shelter for half of the budget is given to 200 people or so for delivery services while so-called community service or community safety is another buy-off of protesters using money to criminals.
Next is Gabriel Mahan, followed by Arthur Esparza. Gabriel, you are still muted, so you'll need to press star six so we can hear you. Oh, we had you, and then you went away. Try one more time, star six. There you go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Hey, my name is Gabriel. I'm a renter and tech worker in District 3, and I'm calling to urge the council members to support Councilperson Sawant's People's Budget, as well as the demand to give carpenters free parking. You know, like some of the other callers today, I was totally surprised at the fact that construction workers don't already receive free parking. You know, these folks are literally building the city we live in, and they don't get paid enough to live here in the homes they're creating. And then to add insult to injury, we make them pay for their parking on top of the long commute to the city's busiest areas. You know, as a tech worker, I can just boot up my computer and go to work from home, but the fact that we're making our indispensable, you know, tradespeople pay for their own parking to build tech sector buildings even is just a clear example of the regressive cost that working people have to pay to live in the city. You know, I think this is absolutely related to demands of the People's Budget. You know, if we want to build a thriving city, we need to invest in the demands of the community, and we absolutely need to expand the Amazon tax to build public housing, public restrooms, and other things, you know, that the community needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Arthur Esparza, and then I have William Bain showed as registered but not present. So, William, if you can hear me, now's the time to call in. If you call in in time, we'll give you your two minutes. Next up is Arthur. Welcome.
Yeah, my name is Arthur Esparza. I'm the Chair of the Peter J. McGuire Group. We're the largest caucus of carpenters in the Pacific Northwest. We're also the contract opposition. I'm also a member of Local 30 carpenters. I wanted to speak in support of Sawant's bill to get all construction workers paid parking. I currently do not live in Seattle. I can't afford to live in Seattle. I live in Everett, and many, hundreds and hundreds of construction workers like myself cannot afford to live in Seattle, and we commute daily to go to Seattle to build the city that many of you all take for granted. Quite often, construction workers leave way before dawn, like about 3:30 AM, 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM. It's quite common when you're all still asleep. And when we get to town and we have to pay for parking all day, the parking rates have gone up astronomically in the last decade because they've also gone up in conjunction with the price of real estate. And because the parking lots are going away in Seattle because of all the high-rises and different buildings that we build, the parking just continues to rise. It's really not a burden that should fall on the shoulders of construction workers. It's only right that our bosses, the contractors, pay. Please support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I am showing that the last two speakers are registered but not present. That's William Bain and Aiden Carroll, and I'm looking to our IT folks to make sure that there is no one in the waiting room that is pre-registered and ready to go.
There are no other public comment registrants.
Thank you so much, son. Appreciate it. With that being said, we're going to go ahead and close out the period of public comment and move to other items of business on the agenda. We do have a short agenda this afternoon, so we'll go ahead and get going. The first item is payment of the bills. Will the clerk please read the title?
Councilable 120187, appropriate management pays sovereign claims through the week of September 27, 2021 through October 1, 2021, and ordering the payment thereof.
Thank you so much. I move to pass Council Bill 120187. Is there a second?
Okay.
It's been moved in second. If the bill passed, are there any additional comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Juarez.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Morales.
Yes.
Musqueta.
Hi.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant? Councilmember Sawant? Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eighteen in favor, none opposed. The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read item one into the record?
Agenda item one, Council Bill 120186, willing to city employment, authorizing the execution of agreements between the city of Seattle and certain city unions, authorizing compensation for certain city employees not covered by collective bargaining agreement and ratifying confirming certain prior acts.
Thank you so much. I moved to pass Council Bill 120186. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. I am the sponsor of this bill, so I'll address it first and then open the floor to comments. But before we actually debate the underlying bill, I did want to move the adoption of the amendment. I did have an opportunity to speak about the amendment this morning, and it was published on the agenda. It is Amendment A. Pardon. So I'm going to go ahead and do that first so we can have a conversation of a potentially amended bill before us. So I move to amend Council Bill 120186 as presented with Amendment A on the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to amend the bill as presented on Amendment A. Again, colleagues, as I described during this morning's council briefing, this legislation would authorize additional pay for frontline city employees to acknowledge hardships, offset additional costs, and retain frontline city employees who continue to deliver in-person essential city services during the COVID-19 public health emergency. As it relates to the items addressed in this legislation, the city last week reached a new tentative agreement with ProTec 17, representing the Central Staff Analyst Bargaining Unit. Amendment A, which is currently before us, would attach this new tentative agreement to the council bill so that it would be ratified along with the other agreements already included in the legislation that was transmitted to us by the executive branch. This tentative agreement includes the same terms and benefits as the other agreements that were attached to this bill as it was transmitted. And the late addition of this agreement is simply the result of sequencing. Since the executive-led negotiations, city unions did not initially include the Central Staff Analyst Bargaining Unit, this agreement is ready now to be attached to this legislation now that those negotiations have occurred and have been completed. So I'm happy to answer any questions about Amendment A. But of course, I do recommend that my colleagues support the adoption of Amendment A. Any questions? Or comments on Amendment A? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment A? Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed. The motion carries, and Amendment A is adopted. And I'm going to go ahead and make comments on the amended bill before opening it up to any further debate. Again, Council Bill 120186, as amended, includes terms for frontline worker pay that are authorized by this council bill, that would be authorized by this council bill if approved. So the terms in this bill, excuse me, were negotiated with various unions representing city employees, and the benefits provided therein will apply to both represented and non-represented frontline workers employed by all three branches of city government, including the legislative branch. Following the adoption of Amendment A, which we just did, this legislation would ratify four tentative agreements with all the bargaining units who have agreed to these terms. This frontline worker pay will go to eligible employees in the form of a lump sum payment of up to a maximum of $1,750. This is comparable to the total value of the telework stipends that have been paid to city employees who have been working virtually throughout the pandemic. So generally speaking, city workers are eligible for either the telework stipend or the frontline worker pay and cannot earn both benefits. The estimated cost for additional pay to represented and non-represented frontline workers is approximately $6.5 million. And there are sufficient reserves in the general fund needed to support this, this additional expense. I do want to make sure that members of the viewing public and colleagues know that future legislation will have to come before the council later this year or early next year to make appropriations to various city departments in order for them to execute the lump sum payments to eligible employees once we have a better sense of the full universe of those who will claim it. Finally, as I noted during this morning's council briefing, the city has now reached tentative agreements regarding frontline worker pay with all unions representing city employees, with the exception of the Seattle Police Officers Guild. The Seattle Police Officers Guild was offered the same terms and benefits agreed to by all other unions, but has so far rejected the city's proposed terms. Of course, we are disappointed in, in that rejection, but, but we'll continue to move through our processes here to make sure that the frontline workers who are complying with vaccine requirements and who are also, frontline workers and agreeing to accept these terms are compensated accordingly. Okay, folks, I don't have anything else to say on this particular issue, so I'm going to go ahead and wrap up my comments and open up the floor to any additional comments on Council Bill 120186. Any additional comments or questions? Councilmember Herbold, please.
I just want to make one additional point. Thank you, Council President Gonzalez, for covering this so thoroughly. One additional point I would like to just add is my understanding as it relates to the position that Spog has taken, that the city did not tie offers on acknowledgement appreciation pay to offers on vaccine mandates. So I just think that's an important clarification for folks who are following along on both of these related issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on Council Bill 120186 as amended? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the amended bill? Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed. The motion carries. The bill passes as amended, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Is there any further business to come before the council? Not seeing any hands raised, so colleagues, this does conclude the items of business on today's agenda. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is on, is on October 18, 2021, at 2 o'clock PM. I hope that you all have a wonderful afternoon. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.